All right, everybody. Welcome to our January 22 Board of Education meeting. At this time, I would ask you to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And when we're done, please remain standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as we remain standing, if you would please, if we could take a moment of silence to honor the victims of the New Orleans shooting that happened on January 2nd since our last meeting, as well as the passing of one of our own students, Gabriella Severies, on January 8. Thank you. You may be seated. Oh gee. I'm sorry. All right, Ms. Drummond, any changes to our meeting agenda?
We have one change. Item 6A, the Student Representative Report. Hazel has midterms this week, so she will not be attending.
All right. Good luck, Hazel. We hope you're studying hard and you're going to do great tomorrow. All right, that takes us to item 5A, Leadership in Our Community. Dr. Scanlon.
We are very lucky to have so many students in this community who volunteer and help within the community. They contribute so much to the culture of Three Village and what we have done. So we're pleased to honor one of our own tonight, Lindsay Stipe, for her volunteerism and outstanding leadership in the community. So congratulations, Lindsay.
All right, thank you so much. That takes us to 6B on our agenda, and we will call up Ms. Pimentel.
Okay. Good evening, Board of Education, members of the Cabinet and Three Village community. Tonight, we'll take a high-level look at key data the state uses to evaluate our district in its annual school report card. While there's a lot of data to cover, enough to make your head spin, I promise that we'll break it down into manageable pieces and focus on the big picture. This overview will highlight our district's performance, trends, and areas of growth. More specifically, we'll focus on enrollment and demographic data trends, chronic absenteeism rates, elementary and junior high level achievement, our secondary level achievement, and graduation rate. Okay, so let's dive in. First up, our student enrollment. So after experiencing a sharp decline in student enrollment, the rate of decline has slowed since 2021. This year's enrollment counts are unofficial until the data is certified in August. When disaggregated by grade level, you'll notice that the elementary enrollment has begun to stabilize, helping to slow the overall rate of decline, while secondary schools continue to experience a gradual decrease. This chart shows the 10-year trend of three different subgroups. The top line shows the percent of students with disabilities, which has remained steady. The second line shows the percent of students who are economically disadvantaged, which has climbed over the past 10 years. And the third line shows the percent of students who are English language learners, which has grown. A significant number of these new English learners have recently arrived with interrupted schooling and lower English proficiency levels. This is one of my favorite slides. The next two slides are visual representations of the increasing diversity in our schools. And this is a word cloud that shows the primary languages other than English that are spoken by our students. There are 29 different languages spoken other than English, which represents 324 of our students. This word cloud shows the countries that our students were born in outside of the United States, 53 different countries represented, and 267 students. Okay, next, we're going to transition into our chronic absenteeism data. Everyone still with me? All right. So chronic absenteeism is defined by the state as being absent 10% or more of days enrolled. And the state wants us to be, our New York State target is to be under 5%, so the lower the number, the better. At the elementary/middle school level, 7.5% of our students were chronically absent last year, which is down slightly from the school year prior, but still more than double pre-pandemic levels. And at the secondary level, 7.2% of our students were chronically absent, which is up from last year. And to put these numbers into perspective, we can look at the average number of days absent. So students who are not chronically absent are, on average, absent about eight days. And students who are chronically absent are absent about 24 days on average, which is almost a month minus the weekends. So following this presentation, we're going to share informative infographics on our social media platform so that the information in this presentation can reach a wider audience. The first infographic is on chronic absenteeism to raise awareness and provide effective strategies to combat it. So the top part of the infographic will show our pre-pandemic and then post-chronic absenteeism rates at the elementary and secondary level. We'll outline what the research shows about the negative impact of chronic absenteeism on student success in school. And chronic absenteeism creeps up slowly. Just missing two days each month will make a student chronically absent by the end of the year. We'll provide action steps that can help parents to help eliminate chronic absenteeism. And if parents need to know who to contact for support, they can reach out to their school. Okay, next, we're going to transition into our elementary and junior high achievement data. Specifically, we're going to be looking at our students' performance on the Grade 3 through 8 ELA math and science assessments. The federal government requires every school in the nation to test a minimum of 95% of the student population. And as you can see from the numbers, we've slowly increased that percentage over the past three school years. The average percent of students who are participating in state assessments is slowly climbing, and this trend is what we want to continue to see happening. This chart shows the percent of students participated in the spring 2024 assessments for each grade level. This past spring, more students participated in the state assessments in each grade level, but we still fall short of that 95% federal requirement. And you're going to notice, throughout the presentation, I added a disclaimer between the math and science charts. Since many of our students in Grades 7 and 8 take the Regents exam, in lieu of the math 7 and 8 and science 8 assessments, the data in my presentation is going to combine both of those tests into one column. That has been how the state has been showing that on the data.nisa.gov website. So I'm going to be doing the same. So this chart shows how our district's participation in the assessment compared to neighboring districts that we typically use as a benchmark. You can see our district highlighted in green. And the first bar all the way to the left shows the participation of all public schools in New York State, which is about 83%. And when you compare that number to participation rate in Nassau and Suffolk County districts, you can see that the opt-out movement has been more of a Long Island movement than a statewide movement. Last year, we encouraged our parents to opt their children in to state assessments. This is an infographic we created, and Dr. Biscari will continue to share this with parents again this school year through our messenger system, as well as posting it to our social media accounts. This infographic explains the reasons why it's important for students to participate in the 338 assessments each school year. These are annual assessments that the federal government requires as part of our school accountability system. They are considered a low-stakes assessment because the results cannot be reported on student transcripts and can only be used to identify students who need additional academic support. These assessments help our students build test stamina, and we're noticing that students who have consistently opted out of the 338 assessments are struggling with test stamina when they sit for the high school Regents exams. And lastly, New York State made the necessary changes to the state assessments. They're now teacher-created assessments with no time limitations and are no longer tied to teachers' annual professional performance reviews. These assessments are one part of the big picture and help both educators and parents identify gaps in learning. Additionally, these assessments help us evaluate the effectiveness of our instructional programs against the state standards, which is something we haven't been able to do in quite some time at the elementary and junior high school level. These are the different performance levels that a student can earn on the exam. A Level 4 represents excelling in the state standards. Level 3 is at proficiency. Level 2 is partially proficient in the state standards, and then Level 1 is well below the state standards. The dark and light green at the bottom of the chart show the percent of students at the proficient and mastery levels, Level 3 and 4, on the English Language Arts Assessment. One trend we noticed is that there are more students at the proficient and mastery levels as they progress through each grade level. And the mathematics assessment, again, for Math 7 and 8, it's showing the combined performance of the Math 7 and 8 assessments, as well as the Regents, if students took that in lieu of the 7 and 8. And the science assessment, last year was the first administration of the Science 5 assessment. When comparing our students' performance to Suffolk County, we see that our students outperform their peers in Suffolk on the ELA assessment, as well as the mathematics assessment, and our science results as well. We'll also share this out on our 338 data with parents and the community members on social media. We'll be sharing the participation rate of our students, as well as the performance on the assessments, our comparison to the county, the performance levels, and then the individual student report that's available for parents the fall following the state assessment. And any additional resources they may need are links to the state sites at the bottom. All right, now let's leave behind the elementary years and step into high school, where benchmarks such as Regents exams, SAT results, and graduation rates paint a picture of student achievement and future readiness. So first up, Regents exams, English, Math, Science, and Social Studies. The next four slides show how our school district did on each Regents exam compared to Suffolk County. Our children have either reached or are approaching pre-pandemic performance on all Regents assessments. By the end of this school year, we'll reach a milestone, five years since 2020, making this the last year the charts will span our pre-pandemic data when we look at our five-year comparison. This slide shows our performance on the Math Regents exam, and I just wanted to point out that all the way on the top right, we had a new Regents this year in algebra. These are our Science Regents exam results. And lastly, the Social Studies Regents. This chart separates the old data from the new framework exam. The next few slides will highlight how our district's performance compares to neighboring Suffolk County school districts we commonly use as benchmarks. The bar for our district is highlighted in green. To the English Language Arts Assessment, this is the percent of students at proficient and mastery. Math Regents Assessments. Science, Earth Science, and Living Environment. Chemistry and Physics. And Social Studies. Again, we will be sharing this out on social media through an infographic. The top part of the infographic will show what's happened over the last few years and the impacts of COVID to the Regents assessments, explaining why there's some gaps for some of the school years. We'll show our English Language Arts Regents results, Math, Science, and Social Studies. And the next section is AP exams, and unfortunately, this is coming soon. The state has not yet released it publicly, so as soon as they do, I will update this slide and will publish it to the website. Next, we're going to transition into SAT scores, which is an indicator of college readiness. Our students' SAT mathematics scores are hovering near our pre-pandemic averages and continue to exceed the state averages. And our students' performance in critical reading has exceeded pre-pandemic averages. Lastly, let's shift our focus to the culmination of our students' academic journey in Three Village, graduation rates. Our district has consistently maintained a high graduation rate between 97 and 98%. This is a testament to our commitment to student success. And please note that the graduation rate for the 2020 cohort is still unofficial until next year because it does not yet include any August graduates. These are the percent of students in the class of 2024 who earned each diploma type last June. And then this is a three-year comparison of diploma types to give a broader view of the outcomes over the past five years, oh, sorry, three years. And lastly, before our students graduate from Ward Melville, our guidance counselors gather information about their post-graduation plans, and this pie chart illustrates the data that was collected. So thank you for reviewing this important data and its impact on our district's progress. Together, we will continue to build on our achievements and focus on areas of growth to ensure success for every student. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you so much. Dr. McKinnon?
So I have one or two questions. The large increase in economically disadvantaged students seems counterintuitive, given the large increase in the cost of housing and also the increase in the mean SAT scores, which is probably the most unbiased measure we have here of performance. How do we explain that? I don't understand where people live, frankly. I mean, faculty members at the university struggle to afford to live here.
There are some homes in the community that are single-family zoned homes that have multiple families within them.
But are there a lot of those?
Yes. So that is a contributing factor. So since, as you can see by Laura's chart there, over the past 13 years, that number for the economically disadvantaged has increased exponentially.
Yes, it's a huge increase.
Yes. And that brings burdens budgetarily and costs, as well to counseling services and things of that nature for the district as well. As far as the SAT goes, I really don't know. The explanation is, I can't tell you a clear-cut comparison.
Well, I mean, it's good that that--
They're doing well, yes.
But this is, does that have an impact in the actual teaching, in the classroom? Do people feel, the teachers feel there's an impact here, or it's not really?
Oh, for the economically disadvantaged? Absolutely, yes. So particularly when we look at programs for ENL students at Mount, you've seen how many faculty we've had add to that building over the course of years and support services that we had to put into place, including social workers. We have a multilingual counselor, a social worker that works with the population as well. So it's a major consideration that we have to keep addressing. As Laura showed, it's in the past, 25 years ago, the vast majority of students were coming primarily from East Asian nations comprising that population. Now, it's expanded much further than that. So that presents different challenges as well. So when people look at Three Village and they think a North Shore district doing very well academically, we do have this component that is, has really created some needs budgetarily and from what we put in supports. So it's curious that, you know, just recently, we have the state, with the governor's proposal for aid coming out, and the data that is being looked at in order to determine how that aid is given to us. If these stats were included in that today, our aid ratio would be much different. But they're looking at census data over 10 years.
From quite a long time ago.
Correct, yes.
Yes. Okay, so the other question that you just briefly touched on, but I feel never gets quite enough exposure, is the meaning of low-stakes testing, which is, it's not my problem. And I feel like every year, we have to emphasize that, and I know you do. I know you do your best. But nonetheless, it's a not-my-problem problem, and it's good for everybody to do these low-stakes tests, and it would be advantageous, and I'm really just talking to the people at home about this, everybody here agrees, but it would be advantageous if everybody did them.
Absolutely.
Yes, agreed. And the big piece with that is the test stamina, because at some point in time, a student is going to take a test, some type of standardized test. Whether it's an SAT or a PSAT, or if they go on to college, LSAT, or an MCAT if they want to go, or GRE, something of that nature. The more they're exposed to the technique of how to take tests, we're doing a lot of the preparation with that, with our teachers, with the students, and it's time-consuming because they're not feeling that as much as they used to. The number in 3rd grade is very high, and then it goes down.
Yes, I was surprised by that. What's the explanation for that?
They're new. That's basically when it comes down, that it's their first year in taking the test. So then they hear from perhaps members of the community or other parents that, oh, it's not a big deal. We do use that data. It is important to us. And in the absence of that, we've had to put in other benchmarks. Dr. Biscari has been instrumental in doing this with his committees that he has going about how we are able to compare our students from one to another in the same grade level and from cohort to cohort as they're coming through. So that's another increased cost of the district because we're having to supplement what our parents aren't taking that is free from what the state offers. So, and as we said, there is no impact as far as it's not being used for evaluative purposes. The data is informative to us as we try to place students appropriately and give them services appropriately. And that data is used across the entire district. It's not just a one-stop deal.
You got to say something, Bron.
You lied on there.
Yeah. You know, without full, comprehensive data, I don't have an answer for you. If we had, you know, more standards-based assessment that we had a higher percentage of people participate in, which we're trying to put in as a district, then we can really break it down by standard and give you some explanations as to, you know, why we have this many, you know, students that are meeting proficiency in the various grade levels. But we're not data-driven because of the opt-out movement, and we have to put things in place that are going to give us that data so that we can make some decisions about our instructional program.
Any other questions?
I want to thank Ms. Pimentel for all the hard work, and thank you for coming in this evening. I know you sustained an injury over the weekend, so you're a trooper for coming in and helping us deal with all this tremendous amount of work that went into this report. And this is information that we are required to present to the Board of Education and the community, so I thank you for all the efforts in your office and your team.
Yes, thank you very much. We do appreciate it. All right, we're going to move on to 6C on our agenda. This would be a discussion of consideration for a bond. Mr. Carlson?
Thank you. So we've been working with a bond committee for over a year now. We've toured all the buildings. We have a whole list of projects that the committee unanimously, the committee is made up of community members, parents, as well as some district staff, representatives from all our different employee groups. The committee unanimously recommended, there was a list of about $125 million worth of construction projects. The recommendation is to do, keep all of those on the list if we were to have a bond referendum. There's a lot more work that needs to be done, of course. We can't do everything, but that wouldn't be the goal anyway. Just like if we do work at home, it doesn't mean, you know, everything that we could possibly ever want to do on our house, we do in one shot and then never have to worry about it again. No, it doesn't work that way. So our recommendation to the board is that we have a bond referendum in the amount of, it's about $125.1 million. What it would mean, over a 15-year term, after building aid, of which we get, as you know, we've discussed in the past, 66% of the cost comes back to us in the form of building aid. So whatever the cost of the project is, the state is paying 2/3 of the cost. And it's not just on the construction cost, it's also on the interest as well. So when we talk about doing a bond, issuing a bond means borrowing money, right? So we'd be borrowing the money over a 15-year period, paying it back with interest, of course, when you borrow money, you pay interest. But two things about the interest. One is that we're a governmental entity, right? So we're a taxing authority, so there's virtually no risk to any of the investment banks that would purchase our bonds, so we pay low interest rates. Also, on whatever interest we do pay, we get building aid on that as well. So the state would also pay 2/3 of the cost of the interest. So it's a great deal for us. This is one of the areas where some of the quirkiness of the state aid formulas works to our advantage in that 66%. And to give you an example, Longwood School District gets about 74%, right? So there's a huge difference in the wealth of the districts, but there's not much of a difference in the building aid ratio. Just works out that way. So that works to our advantage. So with the committee agreeing that, yes, all this work needs to get done, the bond is the fairest way for taxpayers to pay for it. So that's our recommendation. Now, there's two, a couple of considerations, is if the board is in agreement that we should have a referendum, well, then the question is when? So if the board voted on it tonight, the earliest possible date we could have for a referendum, meaning it goes out to the voters, would be March 18th, because of the timing of the legal notices and that sort of thing. That's one option. But the problem with that is it's during budget time. We just got, the governor's budget proposal came out yesterday. It's not that we expected great news, but it's not good news for us. It's going to be a difficult budget year for us, so that's a consideration. The other time maybe we could consider having the referendum would be maybe in the fall, after the budget's done, everything's all in place. And from a construction standpoint, it doesn't make a whole lot of difference because of the timing of how long it takes. First, after a referendum, then our architect has to draw up all the plans and specifications, submit them to the State Education Department, and they take forever to approve projects. So even at the earliest, we're looking at work beginning at the earliest, during the 2026, '27 school year, with real, big-time work commencing during the summer of 2027. So whether we have a referendum in March, we have it at the same time as the budget vote, or in the fall, it doesn't make a whole lot of difference, timing, construction-wise. So that's-- So that's, that's, you know, where we're at, and I'd be happy to take any questions. And of course, I'm sure Dr. Scanlon will have some comments.
Certainly. So one of the good things that was proposed with the governor's proposal is that there would be no change in the building aid formula. So the, one of the fear factors based upon what happened last year with the governor's proposal about cuts in different areas with aid and formulas, that was a consideration that could have been changed. So that was not a recommendation. So we are, will still remain at the 66% going into next year, which is a good thing. So if it is decided to, like, whether we do a vote now, or as Mr. Carlson said, later on this year, either towards the budget season or in the fall, it's still 66% at that time. So thankfully, that means that 2/3 of whatever we propose, money will be coming back to the district in the form of aid over a 15-year period. Correct, Mr. Carlson?
Correct.
It's not, not over?
The aid comes in over 15 years.
No matter what happens.
Regardless of?
When the work's done.
There are, and it's not a criticism of another, any other school district, but if you read the, you know, the info on, on the bond proposals that some other districts are doing, there was one recently where their, the term of their bond is 30 years. That's fine. It lowers the annual payments, but the building aid is still 15 years. So it's great now for the first 15 years, when, when 1/15 of the total building aid is coming in each year, and only 1/30 of the payment is going out. The problem is after 15 years, when the building aid stops, and there's 15 year, more years of payments. So my recommendation would be let, do the term of the bond the same number of years that the aid comes in, and that's 15 years.
And do you know basically how much it would cost the taxpayers per year?
Yes. So to, without taking into consideration existing debt service that we have that will be paid off over the next few years, that would be something different. This bond by itself, once it's fully, all the work is done and aid has started, total amount would be, the average taxpayer would see an increase of $284 a year for the 15 years. As I mentioned, we do have existing debt service that will be coming off our books, will be fully paid off in the next few years, so that would be a reduction. But this bond by itself would be $284 per year for the average taxpayer in the district.
And if you recall, we, based upon the bond committee's proposal, our proposal to the Board of Education is that we split to two propositions. The one being the vast majority of the bond, which is the safety and security components, things that we must get done for safety reasons, boiler rooms, things of that nature, curbs and sidewalks, drainage and all those things. The second proposition, which can only pass if the first proposition passes, is the turfing of the football field and the air conditioning in the elementary cafeterias and spaces, and gyms, as well as the gyms at the two junior high schools. So that, so it is split that way. That would be our recommendation if, if the board considers going out with the bond.
Any other thoughts or questions about the bond for now? Okay, thank you so much. We will move on to security, which is item 6D. Dr. Scanlon and Mr. Blum will be presenting.
So thank you very much. We wanted to just give some background into some of the additional security options that we were discussing. The reason why the data is on is this was supposed to have been done at the January 8th board meeting, but unfortunately, because of the circumstances in the community that night, we had to cancel the, the meeting. Okay. Okay, Nick, now we're not advancing. There we go. All right, so just some history. So prior to the fall of 2012, and that's when Sandy Hook occurred in that, at that time period, the district had security present in only the secondary buildings. So we had the majority of our security team at Ward-Mellville High School, and we had one security guard each at the two junior high schools. Those two security guards were only put into place after Columbine happened in the late 90s. Prior to that, there were no security in the junior high schools at all. We also started the vehicle patrol at night that goes around checking on the buildings. There were less than 100 cameras district-wide. The enhancements that occurred after Sandy Hook in the fall of 2012 included adding the head of security with law enforcement experience. That would be Mr. Blum, who has been instrumental in helping us as we move forward. Security was added at all of our schools. We were over, 500 cameras were added in the districts. We also built the vestibules at each of the schools. Those are the traps that go in that prevent someone just from walking directly into the building. Sign-in procedures were put into effect. Prior to this, we did not have that in schools. We also put in license readers. So when you approach any of our schools, you put in your license, and we can actually pull up any history and background on anyone that's visiting the schools. The other piece, which was brought on with Mr. Blum and Dr. Deruski in HR, was background checks on all employees. So we do not hire anyone in this district in any position without a full background check. And there have unfortunately been circumstances when people have gone into processes that we've done the checks and we have not hired them. Additional measures were put into place that we cannot disclose because we compromised the safety and security in the district, but there are a lot more things that were, have been put into place in the district across the board. We just wouldn't want to be advertising that to the general public about what's in place. The recent enhancements, so what the board voted on this year, it was to add this company called Zero Eyes, which is an advanced weapons detection system. It's an AI technology that's reviewed by experts in the area, in law enforcement and the military. They have two locations, which provide 24/7, 365 coverage for us, so there's never a time when we are not covered. Now, the notification goes to the district and to the authorities on this. So if a, even if a part of a weapon is spotted with this system, the notification goes in. And we're talking a matter of seconds from when it's viewed and when we're notified. The good news is that it fits with all our present software and hardware. That was one of the compatible pieces that we wanted to make sure. And just so you know, I know there's a lot of talk out there on social media and people giving opinions back and forth about what, what this means for us. Just so we're clear, we add cameras every single year. So I know there was some criticism of, well, it's going to mean we're going to have to add cameras. Well, we do that anyway. Technology, in particular in this particular field, goes in and goes out, gets older, just like computers and cell phones. So cameras are the same thing. So we have to update those anyway. So we, we add cameras every single year as it stands. It's not, no different than any other year. So this is not going to increase the number of cameras we would normally have to purchase in a given year. Now, there are other districts in the county which are going to be following our suit with this. They're following up, and we're having some conversations with BOCs about them coming in and doing a presentation. That just recently occurred. So what information has been gathered? We conducted a survey of all the Suffolk County school districts. Forty-one districts responded. Out of the 41, nine districts responded with armed, that they have armed guards on their campuses. The survey of current security personnel for their skill sets also showed that enough of our present security, we actually did this among our own team, and we only hire former law enforcement, a former military with, with the proper background in the military that would go with security. Enough of our present security team has the training and clearance to be armed, so we would not need to go out to seek other people to come in if we decided that we would use our own personnel to do this. So what are the next steps? So we're laying out three possible options for board consideration. First, option A, continue with our current measures. We put in Zero Eyes, stay on track, continue with our current security configuration. Option B, add armed security guards externally, only on the outside of the schools. And option C, add the armed security guards both internally and externally. So some questions to be considered. Which option should be implemented? If we arm the guards, how many would be needed to be armed on a daily basis? Where would they be? What would they be doing? The procedures behind that, you know, what, if they were armed, where, where would they do simple things? Eat, you know, use facilities, those type of things. Mr. Blum has given us some clear directions as far as what the requirements for training would be, but that training would have to go on. It's not as if we would, some of the, as we said, some of those folks have that training right now, and some additional people might have to be trained. Another question always comes to us about insurance. And we already spoken to our insurance carrier, Mr. Carlson had it. It would mean no change to our current insurance rates or anything that we have in place. So that, that piece is not going to be a cost to us overall. So we've put this forward to the board. I'm going to go back and take my seat. We'll entertain any questions that you may have about this topic.
Thank you very much. So we will open it up to questions. Who would like to start? Okay, I'll start. Of those nine districts that did bring in armed security, do you know how many did outside only, how many did inside and outside?
So six of the nine are external only. Two are, two are internal only, and one is both.
Anyone else, otherwise I'll just keep going.
I'll just go along with that. Do you think for our next meeting, we could get a breakdown of exactly how many guards we would need if we were doing internally, how many guards we would need if it's externally, and what that plan would look like? And I don't think we could talk about that in open session, but we could talk about that in executive. So that would be good to know for those two different options.
And can we also get a breakdown, Jack, of how many of our present guards are able to carry the arms in the building?
Yes, I can give you that data. The other data? Board member Vizzo, that's not a problem. The other data, I would suggest that stay in executive session because it is a sensitive topic.
Understood, thank you. Dr. McKenna, did you have a question?
I got a little few, little spiel. Am I allowed to give a little spiel?
You may.
Okay. So a parent sent in to the board a recent study published in the Journal of the American Medical Association. The, the main points were, and first of all, I want to thank the parent for doing that. The main points are that 85% of school shooters are current or former students. And then they tried to do a study across all the school shootings, I think for the last 15 years or so, 20 years. The rate of deaths was 2.83 times greater in schools with an armed guard than without. Their explanation is that many school shooters are actively suicidal, intending to die in the act, so an armed officer may be an incentive rather than an deterrent. These kinds of studies are very hard to do. I think everybody should take them with a grain of salt because the numbers are so small and there's so many variables across the state. But the evidence is, I think, that it's not clear that having armed guards is going to help very much here. But I'm not completely convinced it would hurt either. So I work in an education institution with armed guards, is a local university. Most days I eat lunch in the hospital and other institution with armed guards. It really has minimal impact on my life. I don't feel threatened, but I don't feel safer either because the real risk is so low. As an employee of the institution, I would have liked to have a vote on the presence of armed guards in the university. It does have an impact on the vibe, and I feel like employees should get a vote on that. There are basically three groups that are bearing primary risk here. The teachers, the students, and indirectly the parents. At a minimum, I think we should poll the employees in the buildings on their views. Personally, and I don't think this is a general view of the board, but personally, I would like to also poll the parents and students, at least students in the high school. However this plays out, it would be better if everyone felt they had some say in the decision. As a board member who bears no risk whatsoever, I feel that I personally should have very little say in this. I'm happy to follow the lead of the major stakeholders here. Okay? And again, I'm not saying this is everybody's view. This is my view.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, so I'll jump in with my questions just as we go forward. I think I'd like us to take a look and see of the other districts that have added armed security. What was their process? What was their timeline? How did they do it? How did they engage the community? How did they engage the staff? And over what period of time was that deliberation? I do agree, I think surveying the staff would, in my opinion, be important. I don't necessarily agree about the other two surveys, but I do agree about that. And I do think it's extremely important either way to encourage community feedback, and that's, again, fits into that timeline. We need to provide, as we've seen in other changes that we've made, multiple opportunities so that every stakeholder who wants to be a part of the conversation has a chance to be part of that conversation. So I guess I would ask for the next meeting if we could have a sense of, as you've looked at those other districts who've made changes, what was their process? Anyone else? Okay, thank you so much. Okay, changing to a much happier topic. We will call to the podium, please, Ms. Hurwitz, to talk about pre-K.
Good evening. My name is Tanya Hurwitz, and I'm the Assistant Principal of Arrowhead Elementary School and the pre-K coordinator. I am also a Three Village parent and have two sons. My oldest is a junior at Ward-Mellville High School, and my youngest is an eighth grader at Murphy Junior High School. I would like to thank the Board of Education, Dr. Scanlon, and members of Cabinet for all that you do for our district. It is my pleasure to present to you Three Village's pre-K program, a program that is very near and dear to my heart. Our students are small and young, but they are full of wonder, curiosity, energy, and have a zest for learning. Our pre-K teachers are exceptional and passionate about early childhood education, and they are preparing our students on how to be a learner. This presentation will compare half-day and full-day UPK options for the 2025-2026 school year.
Ms. Hurwitz, I just wanted to go on to the first slide. Just want to make a point to the community that we are not teaching engineering in the pre-K program. They're building bridges, but it's out of blocks.
Pre-K is where the adventure begins. Here are the eligibility requirements and general information you can also find on our pre-K website. Applicants must be district residents. Children were required to be four years old on or before December 1st, 2024. A non-refundable $50 registration fee and first month's tuition are due in the spring. Tuition is currently $650 per month for our enrichment program. Full-day students eat lunch in the cafeteria and enjoy recess on the pre-K playground. Lunch is available for purchase, or students may bring their own. Our current program is in all five elementary schools. It is a half-day UPK program with 195 students enrolled. Our staffing includes five teachers and 10 special education aides. The current cost includes $714,000 for teachers, $309,000 for special education aides, $41,000 for our supplies, with a total of $1,064,000. Less enrichment, $376,000. Here's an example of our pre-K students hard at work. Our enrichment program is based on the Invention Playground Curriculum, which is the nation's only pre-K enrichment program inspired by our National Inventors Hall of Fame inductees. These units are designed to introduce children to foundational STEAM concepts through interactive games and guided play. Focuses on hands-on learning and encourages children to build inventions and explore the world around them. Create open-ended exploration for preschoolers with expert and effective teacher instruction. It includes curriculum and materials that are age-appropriate and designed to enhance a preschooler's innate creativity. Our current enrichment program is located in all five elementary schools. Our current enrichment program is located in all five elementary schools. It is a half-day program. There are 118 students of the 195 enrolled. This year's tuition is $650 per month per student. The staffing has five teaching assistants, five special education aides, and the TA cost is $190,000. The SEAs is $201,000, for a total of $391,000. The revenue we receive from tuition is $767,000, with a difference of $376,000. The State Education Department encourages districts to implement a full-day program. Applying for full-day funding is a maximum of $5,400 per student. This allowance has not changed in over 20 years. The half-day aide is $2,700 per student. We must partner with a community-based organization, also known as CBO, through our Request for Proposal, RFP. There is an 18-student maximum with one teacher and one aide. If we have more than 18 students per class, we are mandated to have an additional adult in the classroom. Full-day options: there would be 10 classes, two per school, 10 teachers, and 10 special education aides. It would run on a full-day schedule. Specials would be needed. Cost would be $1,766,000 for staffing, $41,000 for supplies, for a total of $1,807,000. New York State aid we would receive would be $874,000. Half-day options: there would be 10 classes in total, two per school, five teachers, and five aides. We would begin to introduce specials to our students. The cost would be $883,000 for staffing, $41,000 for supplies, which gives us a total of $924,000. We would receive New York State education aid in the amount of $437,400. Our recommendations are: pursue a full-day program in the future, but not for next year. Cap the program at 180 students, 10 half-day classes of 18 students per class. Only open additional sections if there are 18 or more students. Add elective supports gradually. Post the RFP, the Request for Proposals, which identifies schools in our local community that are interested in housing a UPK program in their school as per as New York State regulations as soon as possible. In closing, we are looking to have a similar half-day UPK program for the 2025-2026 school year, in hopes to expand the program to full day in the future. I thank you for your time and your continued support.
Thank you so much. It's always a pleasure to spend a few minutes with our littlest ones. I'll open it up for questions.
Sure. So, thank you, Ms. Hurwitz, for the nice presentation. So, I have young children, including some that, you know, haven't entered our schools yet, and I do also network with a lot of parents with young children. And, I mean, the cost of daycare and private pre-K, it's very expensive, right? So, even, you know, a full-day option would be great, but even the half-day option at $650 a month compared with $1,600 a month, which is, you know, what people are paying for private programs, it's a big help. So, I very much appreciate that this program exists, that you help run it. Thank you.
I want to thank Ms. Hurwitz for her work on the presentation and her work for leading the program. I know this is truly a work of love for her. She truly enjoys this, and the program has benefited from her leadership. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. So, that brings us now to our public comment period. We have two who have signed up, so we call to the microphone, please. Anthony DiTaro.
Hello, everyone. I'm here today to address the reconfiguration plan expected to commence on the 2025-26 school year. I understand that it may seem to you that I have continuously been asking the same question over the past two and a half years, but that is because unfortunately, there's no clear explanation for why the reconfiguration plan is necessary, or how it will be truly beneficial to all of our students, which is leaving me and many parents and educators confused and misinformed. I understand that my persistence in seeking clarity may have been perceived as repetitive, but the lack of transparency has left many of us more questions than answers, and our concerns remain unresolved. The community entrusted the district with the care and development of our children for over 40-plus years in this configuration, and we have the responsibility to honor that trust. The teachers and the staff in this district, along with parental support, have worked tirelessly to build a strong reputation of educational excellence. As you may know, a recent created petition is circulating throughout the community and is gaining tremendous support in a very short window of time. Again, I, and now many others, implore the board to open up a real, honest dialogue with the community.[942.22][942.22](Coughs) Excuse me. We need fair and accurate data, not the biased and poorly structured surveys that elicit feelings rather than form decisions. These surveys, based on subjective opinions and unsupported projections of savings, have now done little to alleviate our concerns, especially as it will cost taxpayers at the minimum approximately, and we don't know because the number hasn't been out, $1 million to carry out this reconfiguration plan, coupled with the certainty of accessing teachers in the upcoming budget. We need clear facts about the plan, will improve our, how it will improve our district, if it will at all, and how it will directly benefit our students in a measurable, concrete way. I have been told by a board member that I have a personal vendetta against the superintendent, and I have heard others describe me as unhinged. To that, I say, if standing up for kids and demanding to know why this plan is necessary makes me unhinged, then I will proudly wear that label. I will continue to ask the difficult questions, fight for the answers, because at the end of the day, it is the children we serve who matter most, and they deserve nothing less than our full commitment to ensuring their success. We respectfully ask that the board take the necessary step to foster an open dialogue we can move, so we can move forward in a way that is best in the interest of our students, their families, and the future of this community. To those who feel that it is too late, just remember, it's never too late to safeguard our students, their experience, and their well-being. As Martin Luther King stated, "It's always the right time to do the right thing." Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we call Jean Brunson.
Thank you. I'm a parent in the district, and I want to thank the board for your commitment to finding what the right thing would be to best protect our children's safety in our schools. And I want to thank Dr. McKinnon for citing that study. It was a 2021 study by the Violence Project. Actually, I have the same quote you do on my notes here. It looked at actually three decades of data on school shootings and attempted school shootings. And I note that it did say that armed guards had no reduction in rates of injury, as you said. You also stated that you're not sure that it would hurt, but that same study cited three times the fatalities in districts that did have armed guards. In explanation, the author cited the prior research indicating that, that quote that you mentioned, "Many school shooters are actively suicidal, intending to die in the act, so an armed officer may be an incentive rather than a deterrent." In addition, they noted that more attacks have been stopped by unarmed bystanders than by someone armed, which I find interesting. The study found that, quote, "An armed officer on the scene was the number-one factor associated with increased casualties after the perpetrator's use of assault rifles or submachine guns." There's approximately a 0.5% chance of a school shooting on any given school campus, and while I think we can all agree that that's still tragically far too high, we are much more likely to have a dangerous incident if we choose as a community to put weapons in our schools. We all know mistakes happen. In some districts with armed guards, it has been reported that security personnel have left guns unattended in bathrooms. The greatest threat to our own schools in the past school year was, in fact, the incident from October, in which a law enforcement parent, and I do not personally know who they are, but a law enforcement parent was irresponsible with his loaded service weapon, resulting in his child accidentally bringing it to school. The study I mentioned found that the majority of shooters who target schools are students of the school, calling into question the effectiveness, excuse me, of hardened security and active shooter drills. Instead, schools must invest in resources to prevent shootings before they occur. If we want safer schools, the school district's role is to help ensure that all students have access to school and community programs that are both effective and preventative, including mental health support, social support, socioeconomic support for families, basic needs, and anti-bullying strategies like peer counseling and restorative justice, which actually have been proven to work. The community's role is to insist that responsible gun ownership means keeping weapons properly secured and out of our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. And we do have three letters that were sent in to be read aloud. First one, "Hi, everyone. As you may know by now, I am Alex Dispenigitis. I'm sorry I can't be in attendance physically, but would simply like to ask a few questions, make mention of a few notices, and point out fallacies and arguments. Why has nothing been done since October? Why have the residents of the district not received any meaningful updates in the ways of what's being done? Why are we not giving the board's current position on this issue one way or the other? I've noticed that we haven't gotten any feedback on where the district stands in regard to armed guards. We've only established the district supports AI, which does nothing to stop an active shooter. I've noticed that the sentiment is only amplified by the hypocritical knowing that some board members work at locations that have armed guards. I've also noticed that the proposal of simply adding or retrofitting our security cameras with AI is an expensive half-measure that would do nothing to stop an active shooter except let us know that the gun is there before they start firing." Here is what we know. The current protocols for an active shooter on the side of security would be, once police have been notified, the security guards would be sitting in an office and wait for them to arrive. If we add more counselors, more counseling hours, more soft tactics to do our best to prevent a shooter, that also does nothing if a shooter arrives on scene. I would challenge and ask my opposition that in the event a shooter is active, do they intend on sending the guidance counselors to the shooter? How does adding more counselors help our innocent children when someone else brings a gun into our schools? Finally, I would ask how every, and I mean 100% of shootings end regardless of preventive measures, and that is, of course, with a good guy with a gun arriving on scene, or with the shooter turning the gun on themselves. So, now that we've established the only way to stop a shooter is with a good guy with a gun, why can't we do the most effective, least expensive solution and arm our security staff? So, I ask this board one more time. Why can't we provide our children, the most vulnerable and most valuable population, to all of us parents, with the safety and security they deserve that we provide for our bureaucrats, banks, airports, hospitals, colleges, stadiums, and concert venues? Next, we have from the Wackits. "We are writing to express our strong opposition to the proposal of placing armed guards in Three Village schools. A study published by the Journal of the American Medical Association examined the impact of armed guards in schools and found that their presence does not prevent gun violence. We encourage you to review the full study through the link below, and below it is linked to the Journal of the American Medical Association. Moreover, the presence of armed guards can be unsettling for both students and staff. Contrary to the assumption that armed security provides comfort, many students, particularly those from black and brown communities, report feeling surveilled and unsafe. The National Association of School Psychologists has highlighted that this is a heightened fear that can be detrimental to the learning environment, much like violence itself. We urge you to reconsider this approach in favor of more effective supportive measures for the safety and well-being of our students. Thank you, Reese Wackett and Andrew Wackett, M.D." And lastly, from Shoshana Herskowitz. "In my work in public policy and legislative advocacy, I work alongside people impacted by policy who want to change it and advocate with policy and lawmakers to do so. When we look at how this process works, the first thing policymakers ask for is data on the issue. On the issue of gun violence, the data is crystal clear. Armed guards do not make schools safer. According to the Office of Justice Programs, the rate of deaths in schools with armed guards was 2.83% higher, 2.83 times higher. This is corroborated by multiple sources, including in the letter delivered to you with community signatures last month that is being resubmitted with additional signatures. The second thing policymakers consider is the lived experience of directly impacted people. I've been in the room with some of them. I've been in the room with the parents of Joaquin Oliver and the family of Jamie Gutenberg, two of the young people killed in Parkland. I've been in the room with the parents of Scott Bagel, the teacher killed in Parkland. And those families are not advocating for more guns in schools, perhaps because they had them in Parkland and it failed to keep their children alive. They are calling for universal background checks, for red flag laws, for reinstating the assault weapons ban that expired in 2004. None of this has passed at the federal level, and I don't imagine it will anytime soon. But in New York, we've passed some of these reforms, and it contributes to New York having the fourth lowest rate of gun deaths per capita in the nation." So, what do we do right here? I think we're doing some of it already. We're investing in technology, as Mr. Blam has discussed in earlier meetings. We invest in mental health supports for our students to help prevent and treat those who might pose a threat to themselves and others. There is one thing we can do right now, today, that would immediately make our community safer. If you own a gun, lock it up. Secure your weapons so no one other than you, the licensed gun owner, can access it. The data tells us that safe storage saves lives. In 2020, the leading cause of injury-related death for children ages 1 to 19 was guns. Of the school shootings committed by children 18 and under, almost 80% of the guns come from home, from a relative, and from a friend. Safe storage is not a radical idea. We put baby gates up when our children were small. We lock the medicine and cleaning supplies. If we locked up the Windex and keep it out of our baby's mouth, we should be able to lock up weapons and keep them out of our children's hands, and yet only 46% of Americans safely store their weapons. We can, in our homes, our schools, and our communities, be safer right now, every licensed gun owner storing their weapons safely. We all care about our kids and schools and communities. This is an immediate, inexpensive, and effective way to save lives. Let's act right now to prevent harm from coming to our community, and there is a document attached." That concludes our public comment period. We move on now to our items for board discussion.
Can I make a comment on the comments?
Probably not. Best if we do not. But thank you. All right, we are in conversation about crafting a new committee that would analyze the sum total of all of the district-owned properties, real estate. So, some thoughts and discussion from the board members on how you feel about this, where you think a good jumping off point is, and just so you know, this came out of conversations through our Budget Advisory Committee.
Yeah, I just think it's a great idea for us to get a handle on every single thing that this district owns and maintains, so we have it in one specific area, so we could take a look at it and analyze it. I mean, do we need to keep all the land that we own? What are we doing with all the properties that we own? Just to have all that information, to look at the deeds, to see if we can keep things, if we can sell things, if we can rent some things out, just to have all that data in front of us would be beneficial. You know, I think a lot of that's going to fall on Jason back there, but I think a committee needs to be formed, and not a long committee, a committee that's done in a shorter timeframe, maybe by the end of this, you know, we set it up and be done by the end of this year, and a smaller committee. We don't need 60 people on this committee, but just to get our handle on exactly what we own and what we can do with what we own. Other thoughts?
Okay. So, I agree that we need a very detailed list of all the assets, the physical assets that the school district has, so I strongly agree with that. I'm a little less keen on a committee, simply because I'm worried that it'll take too long. If we have a committee with somebody who has relatives in a deed department, that would be good. But, other than that, I don't see why it should take more than like a month to get this all together, so that would be my only concern. Karen, do you want to expand on that? Because you feel it should be longer and a committee, so can you expand on that?
Just my thoughts were, and, you know, I haven't thought about this that long, but I think it will be quick to get the information and the deeds, but it would be nice if we had a group of people sit down and give us information and ideas on what to do with that information, and I think that would take longer than a month.
Okay. So, you're not saying just get a list of all the stuff. You're also saying, what should we do next?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So, yeah, exactly. I think the first step is, well, the district has to get that. That's their hunting, right? And they have to hunt and pull all that together, find the covenants, find the way that things are annotated and what we can and can't do with them. And then, this would be much like we've done with the Budget Advisory Committee or the Bond Committee, fresh eyes to lay on something and say, hmm, that makes sense, or what if we did this, or what if we approached that person to lease out this part of the property? So, just, it's, again, it's sort of pre-thinking before we, as a board, then have to think about what we can or can't or might want to do in the future with some of these properties. So, personally, I think it's good. I agree. I think the first part hopefully can be quick, and the second part would be a little bit longer, but not too long. But, how does everybody feel about sort of picking it randomly the way that we have the Budget Advisory Committee? Have applications put out, see what people's strengths are, what they bring to the table, and...
Is this something we can provide to the Budget Advisory Committee, or is that not their charge right now? So, if we have this list available, we give this to them and ask them what we should do with the land?
There is some overlap.
There is some overlap, but I don't think the expertise that you're looking for is going to be in that committee right now. It wasn't configured to just do that. It was designed, that committee was designed to look at the budget overall. So, I think the name we were thinking of is Committee for Analysis of District Properties, and providing that, and we would have to work with our attorneys, obviously, as well, because some of those deeds are, they're written in legal terms. We want to be very careful on how, what we can or we cannot do with some of those properties. There are covenants on some of them that we are restricted on... There are covenants on some of them that we are restricted on what we could do if we did anything with them. And there are other considerations of, you know, what else could we do? You know, we might want to involve real estate agents, perhaps, and there was an attempt, Mr. Carlson, you were probably over here when that occurred, to sell off one piece of properties years ago, or at least rent it out.
Yeah, the Nichols Road building, it was probably around, I'm going to say around 2008, 2000, oh, no. We moved out of Nichols Road building in 2009 into North Country. So it was right after that, we were looking to not sell it, but lease it out, and there was very little interest at that time in lease, in somebody leasing it. Just to go backward a second, the first part of the, is, that's the easy part. What properties do we own and maintain? And we do that with our insurance, we do that with our fire inspections, so that's the easy part. What do we do with them? Then it becomes a lot more, more discussion.
Can I just ask one question about the property that was in Stony Brook? There was a school in Stony Brook that was Three Village property, is that correct?
The Christian Avenue School, yes.
Yes. And then that was sold to a private school, who then sold it to a developer ultimately, is that correct?
Burned down.
That burned down.
Burned down, and then was sold off.
Sold off, yes.
Okay. So there actually is a precedent of selling a school district to a developer that ended up in the hands of a developer who built houses?
Yes, there actually was, over the course of the history, I know at least one other piece of property. There was supposed to be a second high school in a district further north along the water. Don't know exactly where that property was. That was also sold off at some point in time.
Sold to a development, okay.
We do have land on Hawkins Road, which was supposed to be the Hawkins Road Elementary School. That's 18 acres, but that one, I know specifically, has a covenant on it and must be used for educational purpose. If we attempt to sell it to anyone, it reverts to the town automatically, with no benefit to the district at all.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying that this is not like off the planet.
No.
Nope.
This has been done before. It's consistent with the fact that we are seeing, or have seen, large declines in enrollment.
The only thing, as I said before, you know, as a development from the, everybody's gone, that was here for about the strategic planning piece, but I'll start to talk about it again. Bring back the camera. With 42 meetings that we had on strategic planning and reconfiguration, one of the things we emphasized with the governing committee was not to sell off a piece of property that we potentially might need in the future, a school for that matter. I'm talking about the Hawkins Road facility. While we'd love to predict right now what our enrollment is today, I can't predict what it's going to be like 10 years from now. It could go up, now, we don't know. So it would be, I think, short-sighted of us to sell off a property just yet until, meaning a school, not a piece of land, per se, until we see what some of those projections is. Ms. Pimentel showed, we're leveling off in that elementary level now. So if that starts to uptick at any point in time, we might need those buildings back. To repurchase property and build a building would be astronomical, and talk about a budget buster at that point. But if you're leasing that building off to someone or renting it to someone, at least it would bring revenue in for us. This building is a prime example. As Mr. Carlson said, we moved back, and the administration moved back to this building in 2009, but for years prior to that, it was rented to BOSI's. It's a BOSI center. For a long time, we had the back of the building, BOSI's had the front of the building, and that brought revenue into the district. So, but this building was an elementary school at one point, and open and operational, and fully, and full at one point. So there is an example of us doing this, you know, in the district as well. And there are schools within the community that have expressed interest in some of our buildings for rental purposes. We're also in conversations with BOSI's again, to assume considerations of rentals of some spaces as well. So it's not as if, you know, anyone's opposed to that. But, you know, to go to the Nichols Road building, an attempt was made, but that was a, you know, that's a long time ago, you know, to have that looked at. You know, it might be time to relook at that again. Who knows that someone might have interest in that building? That building, just so we're clear, cannot ever be used as a school. The trouble for it is, the ceilings were built for office space only. Minimally, the ceilings would have to be nine feet high for it to be a school in New York State, so they're at seven and a half feet. So we can never use that for a school facility. We actually entertained it at one point where the academy would go, but we couldn't use it, unfortunately, because of the heights.
Mr. Carlson, just a question. When you put the list together, not for the schools, because obviously that data lives elsewhere, but for the other properties, if there's any way to include, like, what are the carrying costs of hanging on to them, insurance, or if we have to go mow the grass, or whatever, you know, whatever those are?
Certainly.
That'd be great, thank you. Anybody else? We have a general consensus, so to move forward with forming this committee? Everybody's good? Okay, thank you so much. All right, we'll move on to our items for board action. A, we have a resolution recalling change to voting locations and election districts. Mr. Carlson?
This is, during COVID, actually a little before COVID, we used to have our, all of our polling locations for our budget vote at each of the elementary schools. And we, for safety reasons, we moved it, all the voting, to the high school. As, as most of you know, when somebody goes to vote, we cannot ask for ID, and we cannot have the door locked. In our elementary, especially in Mount and Arrowhead, where the voting was, in the mini gyms, we had people going more than halfway through the building, and it was, it was difficult to police that and keep the building secure. That's why we moved. It's worked out really well at the high school. There's a lot less confusion, too, because we always had a problem with people who voted for a school budget occasionally. They wouldn't know, a lot of times, they wouldn't know where to vote, because, let's take, for example, if somebody normally votes in a general election at, let's say, Sotorket School, for a budget vote, they may not vote at Sotorket. They might vote at Menasok, for example. And in fact, it was a general election, some people vote here in North Country, but we had no voting at North Country for a budget vote. So there was confusion. So anyway, so we moved it all to the high school. It's worked out really well. There's no confusion. Everybody knows that's where to vote. There's plenty of parking. We have the voting in the gymnasium. It's easy to secure that area off from the rest of the building, so it really works out well. So this resolution would be to codify that by board resolution that had, to rescind a resolution that had originally been done in 2005, establishing those election districts, because the voting should be done within the election district. So by having separate election districts, the voting really should take place somewhere within that district. By establishing one election district for the whole school district, the voting can be anywhere within it, and this, the voting would be at the high school. So this really kind of, it just codifies what we've been doing for the past few years.
Can I comment on that?
Certainly.
I don't always get to comment. So we talked about this already. There are long lines to vote at times, some times of the day, particularly in the evening, right? And that is the downside with having it in one spot. When it was in more distributed positions, it was much easier to get in to vote. Is there some plan to improve traffic management? Because that actually, when there's a large turnout for voters, there has been once or twice.
Yeah, I think Mr. Mano could speak better than this than I can, but I think this will actually help, because the way we've been doing it at the high school is election districts, but all within the high school. So if it happened to be 50 people for the Sotorket Election District showed up at one time, they're on a line, whereas Naskake might have nobody on that line. This would, one district for everyone. Would you agree with that?
Yes, so last year was the first year that we really got compliments on it. Everybody was saying that it was so easy to come in and out, there weren't any lines, but you still had to go and check in in the election district that you were registered in. This, going forward, all the, anybody who's available, they just could go to anyone that's available in the future, whoever, whatever person is sitting there, they could just go there, check in, and go vote, so you don't have to wait on a specific line or anything like that, so.
I actually agree. Once you get into the gym, it's very efficient, right? I'm not arguing about that. It's the cars, I meant to talk about, the lines for cars, right? They really, they go a long way back at point times.
I think, I think what happens is if somebody goes to vote at a time when buses are coming in in the morning, or buses are leaving in the afternoon, and that can happen at any school. If you go there at the wrong time, it's, you know, and that could be whether, if it's at an elementary school. If you happen to go to vote at that elementary school or just before dismissal, it's not a very good time to be trying to get into the parking lot.
And last year, I'm sorry. Last year, what we did, too, is we had one hall side, the north side, was only voter parking only, so all the employees had to park on the other side, and the students. All the sports, anything, was all allocated to the south side of the building, and we had security outside all day long directing traffic. The only time that we received calls that there was like a jam was during the busing and at the dismissal time in the morning, and then in the afternoon. Those were the only two times that there was congestion.
And I do agree that this year was better than usual, or better than some of the previous years, but it was also a lower turnout, or a relatively low turnout, so. Okay.
And that's my concern, okay, the traffic.
I think, I talked about this with somebody, but obviously not when the buses have to move in front of the building, but the other times of the day, is there any way, rather than everybody clogging up at that one exit light, they could exit both? You know, go in front of the building, and could we do that?
They actually did that, too, last year.
They did, okay.
He did that. He had the students go out the back way behind the building and at the other exit. That's why it was actually, it was very, it was, you know, the flow was much better that year. He redirected students from the back, from the back parking lot, and also busing, I believe, for sports, and BOSI's were also directed to go to the south side.
And could voters then leave, like I said, by the first one, the more northern one, or go right in front of the building and go to the traffic light more south?
No, they would have to.
We can't do that?
No, they can't do that. They'd have to go out the north side.
Okay, so do we see a motion then to approve the resolution listed in item on 9A? Second? All in favor? Nobody opposed, no abstentions? Okay, so that carries. That brings us to item 9B, resolution calling for bond referendum, as we just discussed.
Can I move to table that?
Mike, please.
Can I move, I move to table that motion?
Second.
Okay. I think in light of everything we just mentioned, it sounds like a great idea, but maybe this isn't the moment, so. Anybody agree, disagree, any other thoughts? Okay, all in favor of tabling just this item? No opposed, no abstentions? Okay, so we're going to table that one, 9B. And that takes us to 9C. Dr. Scanlon?
So this is the pleasant part of the night for me, at least, so I get to talk about the calendar for next year. This is the time and opportunity, for those of you watching at home, start getting your phones ready so you can start calling Southwest Airlines and planning your trips next year. So 25, 26 school year, we will be bringing back the faculty and administration on September 20, I'm sorry, August 27th and 28th for the Superintendent's Conference Day and Professional Development Day. We'll be off on Monday in September for Labor Day, the first, first day of school, September 2nd. On the 23rd and 24th, we rush Ashana, so we'll have two days off. First week in October, the 2nd of October is Yom Kippur. 13th is Columbus Day, Indigenous Peoples' Day, and while we will be celebrating the following weekend on the 20th, so we'll have two, three-day weekends in October. November, November 4th is the Professional Development Day on Election Day. On the following Tuesday is Veterans Day, we will be closed. We were able to preserve the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, so we'll be off Wednesday, Thursday for Thanksgiving, and the 28th, the Friday after Thanksgiving. December 5th will be parent-teacher conferences for the elementary level and the Secondary Professional Development Day. Winter recess will begin on December 24th and go through to January 2nd, so the first day back will be January 5th. On January 19th is Martin Luther King Day, and then February break is still preserved, so the week of the 15th, the 16th is President's Day, Lunar New Year is the 17th, the next day, 18th, 19th, and 20th are the remaining days of the February break. In March, the 20th of March is Eid Al Fatiq, which we'll be off, and that'll be a three-day weekend. And then in April, this coming year, Passover and Easter actually mirror one another, so they will be, this will be spring break from April 2nd, Thursday, April 2nd, through the following week, through the 10th, so school will come back on the 13th. In May, we'll let be off for the 25th of May for Memorial Day, and then the 27th of May for Eid Al Adha. On June, Juneteenth, June 19th will be a three-day weekend before the last week of school. The 24th and 25th and 26th will all be half-day classes. Our last day of school will be on June 26th. Graduation prom will go back to being on Thursday, the 25th, and graduation will be on the 28th. So a little change to next year's schedule, so we're just clear, so when folks see this, you wouldn't judge it by the weather that we're having right now, but if we, if we do, if we use no snow days, we're going to recapture those snow days. We're going to actually go from three snow days that we have this year to only two next year. It's a gamble, but we're willing to do it. And we're trying to work with some agreements with some of our units about if we have to use anything beyond that. The state now permits us to go to remote days on those days. We already have it part of our emergency plan, it's just codifying it with the, with this proposal. If we use one snow day, traditionally in the past, if we used one snow day, we'd have one left over, we would normally have the Friday off before Memorial Day, but because, as I said before, Memorial Day is the 25th, and Eid is the 27th, we're going to take the Tuesday instead, so it'll be, it would be a five-day weekend, that would, so it'll be the 23rd, 24th, 25th, 26th, 27th off. If we don't use any snow days at all, it'll be the 22nd, all the way through to the 27th being off. So that's the proposed calendar for next year, and we have it on for your consideration and approval.
All right, any questions about the calendar?
I just have a comment. So I have young kids. We enjoyed having this Monday off after the snowstorm and being able to play in the snow, and just the thought of having a snow day where we do virtual school and keeping the kids indoors, it's very terrifying, right? So I pray it doesn't come to that. I understand that the calendars, that's, we enjoy playing in the snow.
Everybody needs a snow day. All right, any other thoughts or questions? Okay, then do we see a motion to approve the 2025-26 calendar?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? No opposed, no abstentions, motion carries. Thank you so much.
Just to let you know that this calendar will be posted on the district website tomorrow. We'll put it out through our social media outlets. We did not want to do it preemptively, since there were changes last year with the initial proposal.
Perfect, thank you so much. Okay, so we're going to move on to our consent agenda. Do I see a motion? Second? Okay, we'll dig in. Ms. Germano, item B?
Just a minute from the December 11th board meeting.
Thank you. And Mr. Carlson, items C through E?
Actually, I'll do through F. Item C is a contract with the outside service provider for nursing services when our own nurses, nursing staff is unable to provide the services needed. The next item is a contract with the Middle Country School District for health services. This is for Three Village resident students who attend a private school located within the Middle Country School District. Item E is donations. We have three donations. One is a check for $5,000 from the Sotorket PTA for Arts and Education Programs. Another is a check for $1,200 from the Stony Brook Community Church for the purchase of holiday gift cards for Three Village families in need, and checks for totaling $5,260 from the Three Village STEM Enrichment Foundation to be used for the Murphy Science Olympiad Team and Jelenus Science Olympiad Team. And F is Declaration of Surplus Equipment. And F is declaration of surplus equipment. It's a heater box, a piece of equipment that's used in the kitchen at Menasoket.
Any questions about items C through F? Okay. G, Dr. Bhaskari?
This is just a couple of additional names for impartial hearing officers designated by the state.
Thank you. H, recommendations of the Committee on Special Education Subcommittee in 504 Accommodation Plan Meetings as Dated. And I, recommendations of the Committee on Preschool Special Education Meetings as Dated. And for the remaining items, Dr. Dubrasky?
Yes. J is submitted for your consideration, is the MOA between the MNO UPSCU and Three Village for the items that we discussed in executive session. K, personnel. We have eight instructional retirements, three instructional resignations, one instructional leave of absence, the appointment of several instructional positions and substitutes, adjustment of one co-curricular sponsor, and several annual extra assignments for 24, 25. At this point, I would like to recognize and congratulate the following teachers on the approval of their retirement, if I may. They have a combined experience of about 190 years for these folks who are currently looking to retire. Not one person, yes, in totality, sorry. We have Saria Sale, who is one of our reading teachers. We have John Black, social studies teacher. Antmet Boswick, reading teacher. Judy Brady, elementary teacher. Teresa Dai Van, science teacher. Phil Medina, science teacher. Kim Pushy, elementary teacher. And Bob Speer, science teacher. And on behalf of Three Village, we are very grateful for their dedication to our students. And then we have non-instructional personnel items. We have one instructional retirement, five non-instructional resignations, 12 non-instructional appointments, including changes of status, three non-instructional stipends. We have 12 non-instructional substitute appointments, and several appointments to and for the 2025 Summer Rec Program. It is, as it is around the corner. At this point in time, I would also like to congratulate and recognize Christopher Daley, who has been with us for the last 24 years, helping us beautify the district. The district will be in dire straits without the painter for our district. I know I'm speaking on behalf of the MNO Department, and we certainly wish him well and congratulate him as well. And that is it.
Thank you so much. All right, all in favor of all the items in the consent agenda? No opposed, no abstention, consent agenda carries. And do I see a motion to return to executive session to continue our contract negotiations? Second? All in favor? No opposed? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.